Hello all, how are you? Good to see you.
Hi Commissioner Woods, how are you doing?
Hello, hello.
Hi Keisha, this is Judy. Sorry, we don't get to see each other at Laco meetings.
I know huh?
Yeah.
But I'm gonna be honest with you, I really do like Zoom.
I like Zoom a lot, but I'd like to see people.
I know, it's needed. I really like your picture that you have attached Judy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like.
The one that goes really fast. Let's see, does it show up? Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I was in the third grade.
Okay. Los Angeles?
Yeah, if it was third grade, I was in Inglewood.
Okay.
Which is so funny since Laco is in charge of Inglewood now.
Alrighty, hello Astrid, welcome. Hello Judy, hello Ramalas, good to see you.
Hi there.
Frank, welcome. Good to see you. Hey Heather Lynn, welcome as always. Our through line Heather Lynn Gonzalez, hello Keisha. Good to see you. Alright, Deanne, welcome. Mr. Steele, looking good. So anyone gonna watch a baseball game tonight? Go Dodgers?
No.
Oh Judy, I love you.
But you can, you can do it for me.
Oh no, I thought you were saying, no, not rooting for the Dodgers.
No, 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 I'm for the Dodgers.
Just not watching the game, I hear you.
Go Dodgers, go Dodgers, yes.
Go Dodgers, alright Frank, we hear you.
I used to go to the Hollywood Stars games, long ago.
And was that like a minor league baseball team too?
Well, I wouldn't have called them minor, they were the LA, the Hollywood team. Before the Dodgers came, so it was like.
They were like the founding of the baseball team, got it.
Yeah, this is all fascinating, but it does seem to be 1:30.
Precisely.
Well, you have to call us to order, or we'll talk.
Are we broadcasting all of this to everybody? Fascinating.
Yeah.
That's how we roll, that's how we roll here at First Five LA.
Oh you know, we're in LA, we're from LA, and we're for LA, what can I say?
There we go.
Alright, well, I will, for all it's worth, given the fact that order is, you know, a relative term. Call this meeting to order. So I wonder if Ms. Voe would do the roll call.
Well do. Judy Abdo?
Here.
Robert Byrd?
Here.
Linda Aragon? Astrid Hager?
Here.
Yvette Martinez? Frank Ramos?
Here.
Ramalas Taylor?
Here.
Marlene Zapata? Carla Plitez Howell? Jacqueline Murkowski? Deanne Tilton?
I'm here.
Keisha Woods?
Here.
And Sheila Q.
Here.
Linda, not me.
I'm here.
Got it, thank you Commissioner.
I'm sorry, who was the last person that said here?
Yvette Martinez.
Okay, great, and did you call Judy?
I did call Judy, yes.
Okay.
I was first.
So we do have it for, Judy's always first. You know, when your last name starts with AB, except you know, I mean, there might be an aardvark somewhere. So good, welcome everybody. I think we should probably start Linda with the ground rules for the meeting, would you let us all know what they are please?
Yes, thank you so much Supervisor. Members of the board and public, I'm Linda.
Coming up today.
With First LA, and before we begin.
Everybody, everybody has to mute please, except for Linda, we're hearing too much, too many conversations. Sorry Linda, please start over.
Thank you so much, I'm going to be going over some important updated information today. And under AB 361, members of the First LA Board of Commissioners or staff may continue conducting this meeting via teleconference during declared emergencies through January 1st, 2024. And in interest in maintaining appropriate social distancing, members of the public may observe this meeting telephonically or otherwise electronically as posted on our website and this agenda. Regarding public comments, there are two ways to submit public comment. The first way is written public comments must be submitted in advance of the meeting via email to lvo@firstfivela.org by 1:30 PM the day of the meeting in order for them to be read aloud during the meeting. As a reminder, public comments emailed should indicate the item number the comment corresponds with. Any public comments received after 1:30 PM via email will become a part of public records. During the meeting, the second approach is public members can use the Q&amp;A chat box to express an interest in speaking to an item. It is important that these requests to speak be submitted via the Q&amp;A chat box before the item being commented on is presented. When submitting requests to speak, public members are asked to only provide his or her name and the item number in the Q&amp;A chat box. All public comments received during the meeting via the Q&amp;A chat box will be addressed in the order they are received. When you hear your name called to provide public comments, you will be given the ability to speak during the meeting. If we do not hear you begin your comment upon your name being called, we will call your name again once more time before moving on to the next public comment. Two minutes will be allotted for each real-time public comment. And once the two minutes have passed for each comment, we will move on to the next public comment. And before we begin today's meeting, please do note the following. Today's meeting will include video and audio, allowing all meeting participants and public members to view presentations via shared screen. And to minimize background disruptions, all board members and staff should place their lines on mute until called upon to speak. And to minimize multiple people speaking at the same time to ensure for clear dialogue. If board members would like to speak to an item or have a question, please text our board chair directly to indicate an interest in speaking. A reminder to only include your name when texting. Or you can also alternatively use the hand raise function on Zoom or message me directly via the chat box function, which is separate from the Q&amp;A chat box, and I will coordinate with Supervisor Q to indicate your interest in speaking. Outside of a German, which will be called for by the chair, a roll call will be done for all action items, and a reminder to all board members to take yourselves off mute prior to speaking. If there is technical assistance required during the meeting, please call me at 213-276-9389 and I will connect you with IT. And with that, I will now hand this meeting back to our Honorable Chair.
Thank you very, very much. Let us move then to the consent agenda. As you know, we do not present the consent agenda anymore, but first I want to know whether any board members have any comments. First of all, if you want to take anything off the consent agenda. Any board members present wish to, please let me know. Alright, do I have any comments on any of the agenda items or questions from any commissioners? Alright, the consent agenda includes items A through F. Reminding our representative from the Department of Public Health that they must abstain on item F. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
There are no public comments on the consent agenda.
Alright, then, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Judy Abdo?
Yes.
Robert Byrd?
Yes.
Linda Aragon? Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Yvette Martinez?
Yes.
Frank Ramos?
Yes.
Ramalas Taylor?
Yes.
Marlene Zapata? And Sheila Q.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Alright, thank you very much. The, the next item on the agenda are my remarks, and I I have to say when I was watching Bill Schottner, not watching, but reading about him going into space and his comments about the sort of circle of life kind of thing, it was reminding me at Los Angeles County, we have, we're in the midst of dividing up the responsibilities of one of our departments, which had workforce development, community services, senior services, different things in it, so that there will be a new Department of Aging. And we're thinking about the issues that affect people at you know, at the senior end of the lifespan. It was, it struck me how similar it is to the kind of care that we need to think about and provide to people who are at the beginning of their lifespan. That is, our, those who are in our care and for whom we exist. The question of isolation, for instance, where our kids need contact, they need care and concern. They need to help in meeting their basic needs, emotional and you know, corporeal. Which made me think about our home visitation program, which is the kind of thing that we also think about establishing for our seniors for very different reasons, of course they're much more independent and care for themselves more, but still, the issues are very similar. And home visitation, really over the last five years that we've been paying most attention to it, has become even more vital during the pandemic and now of course, beyond. Our home visitors, like, like our childcare providers, kept working through the whole pandemic and we are grateful to them, I want to say that every time I talk about it. As you know, when we look at item five, we're going to see that Kim used her emergency authority to buy basic goods and services that were needed during the pandemic and other areas that meant our families were not getting just the basic things that they needed. So we made some purchases for Welcome Baby, some of our home visitation grantees. And Kim also has indicated in that item that our families continue to experience a lot of challenges, meeting basic needs. So we are wanting to help our providers figure out how to meet those needs. But it just struck me that there is, you know, when, when, as the poet said, "No man is an island", how incredibly important our connections have become. And I know that there's a long discussion about when we can safely get together and meet again. And I look forward to that, although safety is much on my mind this year as well. And I, I don't know really what the profound piece of it is, but I know that it's a deep emotional part of our work with our kids zero to five and their families, and how important that is in development. I also want to acknowledge our Laco Superintendent Deborah Duerto making her ongoing efforts through Laco to align the county services going to our children as well. Last week at, there was a conference held by DCFS and Dr. Duerto said that she wanted even more coordination in home visitation and data integration, so we're not alone either, we're not isolated either, and I'm feeling very grateful for all of the interconnecting work that we're trying to keep up in order to make sure that our children and their families continue to not only survive, but to thrive. So with that, Linda, are there any public comments, signed up for my comments?
There are no public comments, sign up for your comments.
Alright, thank you, well let's turn the mic over as it were to Kim to see what she might wish to say to us today, over to you Kim.
Thank you Supervisor, Madam Chair. I love the recollection of the quote, "No man is an island" and it's also true, "No organization is an island", and we talk a lot about that theme in the context of First Five LA's strategic direction and focus on systems change. We talk about, you know, in some respects, there's a paradox there in terms of the change we seek and the reality that none of that change can occur on our own, but must be done in concert with others. So it's, it's a good reminder of both the connectivity that we all have in terms of life continuum, as well as the connectivity we have at an organizational level, and I'm super proud of the bridging role I see First Five LA increasingly playing across diverse and disparate partners. What I wanted to touch on relates to a major focus of today's meeting, which relates to our values broadly and specifically diversity, equity, and inclusion. You know, I've talked to the board this past year about our work related to values, our recognition that our values are really foundational to our impact. And last month in my ED report, I provided a little bit of insight to some of the early work that we've been undertaking in recent months this year to really strengthen First Five LA's capacity to embody diversity, equity, and inclusion. Which is, as we all know, a new value, a new investment guideline, but a really important aspect of who we are and what we do and how we show up in the world, both within First Five LA as well as the broader community. I want to acknowledge Antoinette Andrews-Bush, our Chief Transformation Officer, who leads our Office of Equity Strategy and Learning, who has been leading and helping coordinate and move this important work forward. I also want to acknowledge the staff-led Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Governance Board, which we'll hear more about in the coming months, but a terrific staff-led team that's really wrestling with some important issues, as well as the organization broadly. Darnier every member of our organization has been giving voice and participating in a number of efforts that you're going to be hearing about shortly. Today, we're really wanting to share with you all kind of where we are on this journey, and so we have invited, and you see, having joined us, Evan Holland from Seed Collaborative, who is our principal partner in this work. Evan's going to share some of the early learning from the due diligence work they have been facilitating and coordinating over the course of the past many months. And share at a high level some of the critical findings emerging from that work. Findings that are important, findings that are powerful, and findings that absolutely have my full attention. The Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Board, Governance Board is really now taking that, that learning from this initial assessment and digging in in terms of really probing more fully and robustly the findings, considering our lived experience, data from First Five LA's experience, as well as best practices. And we'll be looking to this staff-led group to come up with recommendations to, as to how do we better infuse DEI into our policies, our practices, our culture. I have been so struck by Evan's wisdom in a lot of different ways, but one of the things Evan has reminded us is that we are not alone in this DEI journey. In our efforts to learn, in our organizational efforts to grow. She said, you know, "First Five LA, we are effectively swimming in the American soup" with many other organizations, and that's absolutely true, but as I like to remind us, we may be in a lot of company related to the DEI soup and these conversations and issues, but the issues being lifted up by the seat assessment are our issues. And it's our responsibility to bring forward meaningful, timely solutions to them. One of the steps we took this past summer as a part of our staff learning journey related to DEI is we invited a terrific speaker, Dr. Kakanza, Nuri Robbins, to come and share with us some of her experience and wisdom in working with individuals and organizations that are endeavoring to close this gap, recognize and close the gap between who they say they are and what they actually do. And one of the things she mentioned that has stuck with me is the importance of naming within organizations, naming the disconnects, naming the tensions, as well as the strengths and the assets. And, you know, comment about how tensions and disconnects within organizations are normal. But what's problematic, the issues arise is when we ignore them or pretend those issues don't exist. And we are not pretending at First Five LA, we are, we are leaning into this work and we are lifting up questions and learning together. And, you know, I think we are a good example of an organization whose story is one of intentional learning and trying to do better, and to live up to our values, to achieve our aspirations for young, young children. I've said to the First Five LA team a time or two, I really do believe there is a certain humanness and grace, if you will, that can be found in the knowledge that we are part of a community of colleagues, a community of human beings, and a community that recognizes we can do better and we must do better and we will do better. And today's session with the board is in recognition that our workaround diversity, equity, and inclusion is all of our responsibility, and we all have a role to play, including our board. So we're eager to share with you what we're learning, and we're eager to hear from you relative to your own wisdom and experience and thoughts as we move this important body of work forward, and we'll continue to do so even more robustly in the new year. Back to you Madam Chair.
Alright, thank you very much Kim, I really, really appreciate your comments and look forward to the conversation, I've known Dr. Nuri Robbins, gosh, it probably goes back thirty or so years, and we've been having these conversations, but never so presently, I think, as our society is having them today. So thank you for your remarks, are there any public comments Linda on Kim's remarks?
We don't have any public comments, but I do see Commissioner Taylor's hand raised for Kim's remarks.
Okay, did you say Ramalas?
Yes.
Alright, Ramalas, please go ahead.
Yeah, my question is, is I'd like to get a copy of this report done by Seeds as to where we stand, what they found out, what the evaluation of the organization is as it relates to internal as well as external to the organization. The other thing I would like to put on the agenda too, for not only the board, but for all of us, is to make sure we're talking about the same thing when we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, because different people, depending on where they come from and what they're doing, define that differently. And not everyone understands that when you deal with diversity, equity, and inclusion as it relates to external issues, it's different versus how it's internalized in an organization. So I just wanted to make sure we get this right definition for internal and external as we view this as it relates to what we're trying to do.
And if there's some training for the commission, we should talk about that as well. Thank you. Thank you, we, we will be hearing from Antoinette as well as Evan about our timeline and when there are certain deliverables that will be, you know, reflect the, the body of work that is currently very much in process. So this is like an early preview, well before the completion of the, the report. And we'll also talk about some of our learning about your latter issue Ramalas, in terms of the importance of there being clear and consistent understanding of what we mean by DEI, as well as opportunities and issues associated with board learning and engagement. So both points well taken, and we'll be following up on both of them.
What about the access to the report?
The report, as I said, Antoinette will be sharing a timeline in terms of where we are and when there'll be deliverables that reflect the, the full body of work. So we'll absolutely have that available fully with the board and the broader public once it's, once it's finalized. So again, we're, we're still in the early stages and consistent with our interests in keeping the board apprised of our workaround values broadly, DEI specifically, as well as to solicit your feedback. This is an early preview, there's, there's not yet a report.
Okay, I don't see any other requests from commissioners to speak, is that correct?
That is correct.
Are there any public comments?
There are no public comments on this item.
Alright, then, thank you very much Kim and all commissioners who participated in this piece, looking forward to the presentation, but first we'll go to item five, which is an action item and requires a vote. And that is related to the emergency ratification and the resolution that goes with it for any actions that Kim took independent of the board. I think you've all seen the description, it was really to purchase necessary goods and services, as I spoke about in my, in my comments. And then also the item on paid time off in terms of our holidays. Do I have any questions from commissioners on these emergency ratification actions? I don't see any requests or questions, is there any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
Alright, then, may I have a motion for, to approve Board Resolution 2021-08?
I'm, I move, this is Commissioner Taylor that we approve this.
Alright, do I have a second please?
Second.
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Judy Abdo?
Yes.
Robert Byrd?
Yes.
Linda Aragon?
Yes, thank you.
Here, yes.
Yvette Martinez?
Yes.
Frank Ramos?
Yes.
Ramalas Taylor?
Yes.
Marlene Zapata?
Yes.
Sheila Q?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
All right. Thank you very much. That then brings us to item number six, which relates to what was spoken about, that Linda talked about earlier in the meeting in terms of our findings and our continuing to conduct public meetings by teleconference. Craig, do you wish to present this item?
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. As Linda said earlier, we are now operating in a remote context under the authority of AB361, which took effect on the first of the month. And that allows this kind of remote meeting of a Brown Act body during, during a declared emergency where there's a need to protect the attendees, members of the board and staff from a risk of a public health threat. So for the time being, our executive director and staff are recommending, while there's a declared emergency and social distancing measures are still recommended, that the board continue to meet in this remote context for the near future at least. AB361 now requires that the board do two things. One is allow real-time public participation in your meetings, which the procedures for which Linda outlined earlier in the meeting. The second review every 30 days, the need to continue to meet remotely and make a determination about that. So this will be the first review and the first determination under AB361. That's why it's a discussion item now and the future we anticipate this will just be a consent calendar item until we determine that there's good grounds for coming back to in-person meetings. But also for this first review, since we're bringing it to you and asking you to act on it at the same meeting, we would require a waiver of governance guideline. One, which is the governance guideline, which requires a first presentation and a later vote at the, at a subsequent meeting. So that waiver would require the affirmative vote of seven commissioners. So staff recommends that the board first, in the same motion, waive governance guideline number one. And also that the board review the existing state of emergency and need to promote social distancing measures as recommended by Cal OSHA and some of the other authorities. And determine that an in-person meeting of the board would present a risk to the health and safety of attendees, staff and the public. And for that reason, continue to conduct both board and committee meetings in this remote format. Again, that would take a seven of nine vote on that measure. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
I, I would note that recommendation. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second it. This is Ramalas.
Thank you, Ramalas. Any questions from commissioners? Any questions from commissioners about what Craig has presented? And any public comment?
There are no public comments on this item.
All right, then I believe we can call the roll on item six.
Judy Abdo?
Yes.
Robert Byrd?
Yes.
Linda Aragon?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Yvette Martinez?
Yes.
Frank Ramos?
Yes.
Ramalas Taylor?
Yes.
Marlene Zapata?
Yes.
Sheila Q?
Yes.
Motion is passed with nine votes.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you, Craig, for putting that together for us. It's still, we're, as they say, we're just not out of the woods, but we're watching it very carefully. We're very grateful for all the people who have gotten vaccinated. The numbers have gone down, but still a little worrisome in, in many of our areas. So thank you for this and we'll move to item seven, which has to do with our first five LA annual report to first five California. I believe we have a brief presentation on that from Aneska Rikacheska.
Oh, perfect.
Really?
Yeah, really. That was fantastic. I don't think anybody's gotten my name that well. Thank you.
Kim coached me.
Well, let me share the presentation here. Just checking, you can see the presentation now? Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. On an annual basis, first five LA submits a report to first five California in order to fulfill requirements of Prop 10 funding. I shared preliminary report findings at the September 23 program and planning committee meeting. Today, I will provide an update with final report findings and request authorization from the board to submit the report to first five California. We will begin with a review of key report findings, then transition into an in-depth review of the financial findings. From there, we will revisit insights we heard from board members at the September Program and Planning Committee meeting and how that's informing our next steps. This slide provides a summary of key findings for each of the three sections of the report. We will be covering the findings highlighted in section one in the next few slides. So in the interest of time, I will hold off on these. In September, we shared findings from section two, that the number of children and providers reached through first five LA investments doubled in fiscal year 2021 compared to fiscal year 1920, while demographics of children's and families reached remained consistent with previous years. Finally, in the memo accompanying today's presentation, we summarized key county highlights related to first five LA's support of professional development and capacity building, how grantees have partnered with families, professional networks and other agencies to improve family serving systems. We also highlighted learnings from two of first five LA's evaluations completed in fiscal year 2021. Now let's explore the financial findings. Report findings indicate that first five LA's revenues decreased $18.9 million from fiscal year 1920. Expenditures also decreased by $10.2 million from fiscal year 1920. And this resulted in a net change in fund balance decreasing by $22.3 million. When looking at how programmatic expenditures were spent, we see that there was an increase in spending on system of care investments up from $37.9 million in fiscal year 1920 to $44.2 million in fiscal year 2021. With that overview of financial findings, let's discuss insights we heard from board members in September and how that's informing our next steps. One insight shared by board members was that the demographic findings were surprising. This year, we have the opportunity to conduct additional analyses into these findings through the LA County Data Brief. As part of this work, we will make use of the annual report data for the purpose of developing the data brief. For example, we will conduct comparisons to demographics, not just in LA County overall, but also the specific geographies where families are being reached. Board members also noted the limitations of the annual report in terms of the story it tells around prevention. For example, the annual report doesn't reflect the extent of services provided and whether these are adequate to support families in optimizing their child's development. Additionally, the annual report provides limited insights into the extent to which first five LA's investments in evidence-based family strengthening programs, such as home visiting, are reducing the number of vulnerable children and families, such as fewer children entering into or at risk of entering into the child welfare system. Recognizing these limitations, first five LA complements annual report data with evaluations and other measurement efforts, which provide greater insights into how our investments improve systems and support families. The summary of key findings of two such evaluations completed in fiscal year 2021 are included in section three of the annual report. For example, the first connections evaluation found that parents who participated in first connections reported improved knowledge of child development, of the importance of early identification and intervention services, and of how to be advocates for their children. We also have several ongoing evaluation efforts, including the AIM evaluation, the ECE path evaluation and the Welcome Baby Virtual Visit Study. Finally, we heard that we should highlight first five LA's COVID-19 efforts. To this end, we included illustrative examples as part of our section three county highlights. Our immediate next step is to receive submission approval and submit the report through first five California's data system. Then we will transition our focus to the development of the LA County Data Brief. To this end, we will be bringing additional findings to the board at the January Program and Planning Committee meeting. Finally, we plan to release the LA County Data Brief in spring of next year. With that, I'd like to open it up for any questions or reactions.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments from our commissioners?
This is Ramalas. And one thing, I just would like us to add, in the future, when we start capturing data, help me grow in what we're trying to achieve in that area as well in the future, if possible.
Absolutely.
Okay, that sounds very positive. That was a yes. Anyone else? I don't see any other request. Oh, go ahead.
I have a comment, Sheila. This is Marlene.
Yes, Marlene.
I'm just, I'm very happy to see that there's more of a focus on process as opposed to outcome, because that's what I've been talking about for a long time, that, that the, the outcome data doesn't necessarily tell us how we can improve our process. I also like the fact that you're trying to cross-tab it with other data systems. I think that's really the direction we're all moving towards, this more integration of, of data across and be less siloed about, about the information. So I'm very happy to see this.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, any public comment on item seven?
There are no public comments on item seven.
Okay, may I have a, a motion to approve the first five LA annual report?
This is Marlene. I move the motion.
This is Frank. I second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Please call the roll on item seven.
Judy Abdo?
Yes.
Linda Aragon?
Yes.
Robert Byrd?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Yvette Martinez?
Yes.
Frank Ramos?
Yes.
Ramalas Taylor?
Yes.
Marlene Zapata?
Yes.
Sheila Q?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. That brings us then to item eight, which is also an action item. To a, this is our mandatory annual comprehensive financial report, including the independent auditor's report. And we will be called upon to approve it if we wish to at the end of the presentation. So I'm going to turn this over to Raul Ortega, I believe. Raul?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, commissioners. Can you see the presentation before you?
Yes.
Great. So let's start today's presentation by some opening remarks. Just want to remind commissioners that back in September 23, the staff within the finance department, along with our partner, Ramai Bailey Kanali Chakosium, presented the fiscal year 2020, 21 annual comprehensive financial report. And in that presentation, we did go into further detail than we do plan on going through for today. All right. So for today, we're going to narrow our focus and we're really going to focus on highlighting our fiscal year 2019, 20 GFOA award. We're also going to spend some time on the actual independent auditor's report and their findings. And also highlight some fiscal highlights for fiscal year 2021, covering the revenues and the expenditures, including fund balance. And then at the end, we will ask the board to take action and I will remind the commissioners and staff of what are the next steps moving forward from once you pass or take action on the audit. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States of America and Canada, also known as TFOA, has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to First Five LA for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. Usually we receive these awards in the one year after the board takes action, but we are proud to announce that we did receive the certificate of achievement and the recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting. This is a significant accomplishment, not only because the comprehensive fund, financial report has a lot more, there's a lot more involvement in, in the actual report than just an actual audit report that we do on an annual basis. Let me just move forward. The annual financial report is above, like I said, the normal reporting requirement set by the California Health and Safety Code and the first five California Management Guide. The financial report goes beyond the scope of basic financials, as I stated, and states compliance as well as it reflects a detailed view of the commission's financial position as of June 30th, 2021, which includes the balance sheet and the income statements found on pages 15 and 16, in reference to the management discussion and analysis section that highlights our financial activities that the board approved back in their budget process in fiscal year 2021. I'm happy to report that our auditors, I Bailey, noted that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles in unmodified opinion. There were no audit findings and adjustments made. So in other words, this year's audit is a clean audit. And I just want to take a second to just go off script and just highlight what it means for this fiscal year. This fiscal year was the first fiscal year that the organization function in a remote, in a remote environment. And we had to put in, into place several policies and several processes in place in order to advance our work in the teleworking environment. And it is because of our nimbleness of the organization that I'm really proud that we created specific policies and internal controls in order for us to not only operationalize in this environment, but to do it in an environment where our auditors have found that not only did we receive a clean audit, but there was no, no findings and or adjustment. But I think that is a significant level of success, not only for the finance department, but for the organization as a whole. And I just really wanted to really emphasize how proud I am of my staff and the organization of their work and the effort for this past fiscal year. Moving into some highlights around our revenue, our total revenue was $81.9 million. The significant revenue comes from Proposition 10, the $60.6 million from the tobacco tax. And then once Prop 56 came into play in 2016, there was a backfill equation. And with the combination of those two things, that's where most of our significant resources come from. We also did receive some other We also did receive some other revenue of roughly $3.1 million. And those are primarily from grant awards that we received from First Five California, from our MAH activities, and also activities from Laco and also ACES. At this time, I want to highlight some expenditures. The total expenditure was roughly $104.3 million, which roughly 88% of those expenditures went to support a combination of our program expenditures and the program operating cost. Operating costs, we relate those to our personnel cost that supports the program and those SNS costs that support the program. In addition to that, we also expended in our administrative area of roughly $12.6 million, which is well within the board-approved action that they made back when they approved the budget process. So with that in all, when you look at your total revenue and your total expenditures, and going back to what Nishka highlighted in her presentation, the board did, I mean, the organization did draw down from its fund balance, its existing fund balance of roughly $22.3 million. And this draw from the fund balance is, was planned and was expected, and we forecast that not only throughout the budget process, but also throughout our long-term financial plan process. Now moving to our fund balance, our total fund balance at the end of the year represents $316.4 million. The fund balance, this breakdown is based on the accounting operations and our GAST requirements. Pretty much what the fund balance represents is the total amount of resources that we have on hand to invest in our programs, into our initiatives, and into our work. The fund balance is broken down in different restrictions, and pretty much those restrictions are, represents different actions that the board has taken. So the main takeaway on this, on this slide, is really to focus on that 175 towards the bottom, which that represents the total, the total amount that the board has moving forward to invest outside of fiscal year 21-22. The top part, where you see the non-spendable, the committed and unassigned, those are resources that had, the board has taken action either through our budget process and/or through legal requirements such as contracts and actions like that. And then for next steps, the board, we do, the organization does have requirements. We do need to submit the report to the State Comptroller's Office by November 1st after the board takes action. And in addition, there is a requirement for us to submit it to First Five California, along as submitted to the Los Angeles County Auditor Controller's Office. Since we are a component unit of the county, our audit does reflect as part of their audit, their year-end audit. In addition, we will use this information as baseline information, not only to update our long-term financial plan, but also to use as our baseline as we start working on our next project deliverable from the Finance Department, which is the development of the fiscal year 22-23's annual budget. And from there, I'm more than happy to take any questions.
Okay, I don't see any requests. Linda, do we have any requests from Commissioners to ask questions or make comments?
I don't see any Commissioner requests or any comments.
All right, well, Mr. Ortega, congratulations to you and to the entire finance team. You know, it's a small sentence to say, "We get a clean audit," but it's a big lot of good work. And not to mention our recognition in terms of the excellence of our work in the financial arena. So thank you so much for all of this good work. We're, you know, we're very proud of how this turned out and looking forward to continuing to keep track and report in such a, you know, positive fashion. Are there any public comments on item eight?
There are no public comments on item eight.
All right, then I believe that we need a motion to adopt this, to approve the draft of the annual comprehensive financial report, including the independent auditor's report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
And a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Please call the roll on item eight.
Judy Abdo?
Yes.
Linda Aragon?
Yes.
Robert Byrd?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Yvette Martinez?
Yes.
Frank Rummels?
Yes.
Ramalas Taylor?
Yes.
Marlene Zapata?
Yes.
Sheila Q?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
All right, thank you so much. So far, so good. We generally need to take a 10-minute break for all of those who are not only participating, but making all of the technology work. So let us take a break and return at 2:30. We're on break. Thank you.
Okay, the hour of 2:30 having arrived, I would like to call the meeting back into session. And hopefully, everybody is on board to move to item 10.
Program, meaning like at the first doula.
Sorry, I can't hear. Who was that?
I think someone's just off mute supervisor.
Okay, good. So everybody mute, we're going back into session and we'll take up item 10. Craig, you need to be offline for this item. And so if I don't hear you say yes, I'll know that you're offline, which is good.
Yes, I will reduce myself for conflict of interest.
All right, thank you. So Commissioners, I know that you know that we contract for legal services. And this is an information item, we're not voting on it yet, but it's just to understand the process of solicitation and the choice for legal services over the next years. And I believe Peter Barth is going to present this item, is that correct?
That is correct, thank you.
Over to you.
Great, thanks so much and good afternoon, everyone. I'll be brief in my remarks which relate to the memo you have for this item. As Kim outlined in her report to the board last month, during the May Executive Committee meeting, I shared a plan to reprocure First Five LA's contract for legal services. So Commissioners will recall that earlier this year in the March Executive Director's report, we reported that the legal services contract moved to a month-to-month agreement in accordance with the board-approved contract. So aligned with what we shared in May with the Executive Committee and most recently in the September 30th Executive Committee meeting, over the summer, the Board Relations and Contracts teams issued a solicitation for service for legal services. And through that process, we reached out to dozens of potential legal services firms and organizations who work closely with legal services firms. And for those who responded to this solicitation at the end of August, we undertook a three-step internal review process, which the outline, the memo outlines. So as the memo shares, the outcome of the review process yielded staff's recommendation that First Five LA contract with Richards Watson Gershon, RWG, Commissioners will know is our existing counsel. And the recommendation is to contract with RWG for an initial contract period of up to five, pardon me, contract period of five years with the option to renew for an additional five years. Of course, the contracts will include the option for First Five LA and the board to end the contract at any point at our discretion if necessary. With that recommendation in mind, we intend to return to the board for action on this item at our next full board meeting on November 10. Finally, I want to draw your attention to the legal staffing transition that will occur if the board approves the contract with RWG. As outlined in the memo, RWG intends to transition Sarita Young, who has long served as a member of RWG's First Five LA Legal Services team, to lead counsel. With Craig Steele moving to a senior counsel role supporting First Five LA's legal services work. So if the contract is approved, Craig won't go anywhere, he'll continue to support the First Five LA legal services needs, but Sarita Young would transition to the lead counsel role. And if this contract is approved by the board, staff would work with RWG, the leadership team internally and the board, to ensure a smooth transition in the lead counsel role. And with that, I'll open it to any questions or comments.
All right, thank you, Peter. Any Commissioners have any questions or comments? This is an information item with the vote to occur at the November 10th board meeting. I see no requests for comments, are there any public comments on this item?
There are no public comments on this.
All right, then, as I said, it's an information item, thank you very much for that. Someone let Craig know that he can come back into the meeting, please. And we will then move to, I think, what may prove to be our largest item on the board, one that was referred to earlier by our esteemed Executive Director, The Way We Live Our First Five LA Values and a Report on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. So let's move to that item. Antoinette, I know that you will introduce Evan to us, and I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can everyone see the screen? I was having a few issues this week with my technology, so I just want to make sure that everyone can see the screen.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. So, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, colleagues, and members of the public. I am Antoinette Andrews-Bush, and I'm the Chief Transformation Officer for First Five LA. Today, I am joined by Evan Holland, who is the co-founder of C collaborative LLC. The C team has been working with First Five LA for nearly a year, helping us to integrate diversity, equity, and inclusion into our policies and practices. Please note that the board packet includes additional information that will not be covered during the presentation. However, Evan and I are happy to answer questions Commissioners may have about any of the information included in the board packet. We'd also like to ensure the board has ample time for dialogue, given the density of the presentation. So the first few slides will be covered fairly quickly. So we have three objectives for today's presentation. The first is to briefly reintroduce the board to the C collaborative. We know we have new board members that who have joined since our last presentation back in March of this year, and we want to make sure that all board members are aware of the work that we have been undertaking. Our second objective is to share some preliminary findings from C's due diligence research, which was completed in June. And third, we will share some initial thinking about the board, about board learning and engagement. Presented in this photo is the full C team that has been working with the, with First Five LA. Since January, we have been working with C to conduct a baseline assessment of our current practices and DEI competencies and to identify best practices in the field. This work is leading up to the development of an organization-wide DEI roadmap and action plan. So here is an overview of the timeline for our work with C. So three key things to point out here. The first is that we anticipate that the work with C will conclude in December of 2022, although we remain flexible to meet the needs of the organization. Second, we will include a series of board and staff learning opportunities to build common understanding of DEI concepts, terms, and language. And the third thing we just want to point out is that we are going to be developing a long-term DEI roadmap and action plan that will guide First Five LA's DEI journey beyond our work with C, but we are not waiting for a plan in order to act. In fact, we have already started implementing priorities that were elevated prior to and during our work with C. Today's presentation will focus on where we are today, as indicated by the yellow star. Evan will describe C's due diligence approach, review preliminary findings, and provide an overview of the internal work currently underway. And with that, I will turn it over to Evan.
Thank you so much, Antoinette, and good afternoon, Commissioners, really happy to be with you again today to talk about this important work. As Antoinette indicated, we're going to be sharing some high-level preliminary analysis and want you to know that I'm deeply interested in engaging in conversation and answering questions along with Antoinette about the full presentation, including the detail in the appendix. So please don't hesitate at the close of our presentation, I'm really looking forward to engaging. So since March, between March and June of this year, the C collaborative team has been collecting qualitative and quantitative analysis from staff, from a handful of board members, grantees, and sort of outside consultants and stakeholders. And these are the five data sets that we've looked at and analyzed. So we conducted an all-staff survey, which allowed sort of multiple choice and one open comment response earlier this year in March, and we closed that early April. We then allowed that information to inform our conversations with staff and other stakeholders, including Commissioners, through interviews and a set of staff focus groups. In addition, we took a dive into organizational documents, including policies and procedures, and we engaged in best practice research to really pull information from the field about promising practices that we're seeing coming out of a variety of sectors, as well as some field notes from leaders, DEI leaders in the field to really get some cutting-edge perspective. I think it's important for you to know that we conducted quite a bit of analysis to uplift these high-level findings and really engaged with First Five staff around clarifying, answering questions. And that's led to the presentation here today. Next slide. And so before we get into some of the details of analysis, want to offer some high-level findings. There are six here, the top three are really the ones that will be focused on today in today's presentation. And you'll see information about the balance in the appendix. So like many organizations, and Kim Belshay alluded to this earlier in the presentation, that, you know, lots of organizations are really grappling with these issues, particularly since the movement for Black Lives and uprisings that happened last year. And so, like many organizations, staffs, boards, and stakeholders have varied understandings of what DEI is and how to wield it. And that's the case here at First Five. And the understanding that, you know, participants in interviews and focus groups and in the analysis, what really came to light from those conversations is the understanding that folks did have was really around looking at equity as meeting needs and thinking about how best to cultivate belonging within First Five. I think that's a really deep staff desire to cultivate belonging. In addition, we learned that there's, you know, work being done to align, there's work that needs to be done to align policies and practices with organizational values. Like many organizations, expressed values are stated, and then there's work needed to be done to bring those values concretely through policy, through practice, through organizational culture. And that work clearly needs to be done at First Five to ensure that expressed values are really playing out in terms of the everyday experiences of staff. The process at First Five is undertaking to integrate DEI into work and internal operations is consistent with best practice. And so that includes engagement of leadership, engagement through this, this type of presentation with Board of Commissioners, etc., and we'll talk a little bit about what that looks like. Some additional observations, like many organizations taking up DEI, First Five LA's organizational culture is already pivoting towards greater DEI. There's clearly a culture shift, and you'll hear conversation about this later in our presentation. There's clearly a culture shift happening internally at First Five. And I think it's promising, and there's more work to do, and we'll talk about what that looks like. There are opportunities to better infuse DEI within First Five strategic plans. So this really gets to, please, please forgive my neighbor's dog and any other environmental noises that we make here through this presentation. Because there, it's the afternoon and the kids are coming home from school, and so there might be noise, so please forget that. And so there's lots of opportunity to infuse DEI more deeply into the strategic plan. And C made some suggestions about how to do that, but ultimately, we're really encouraging the staff process that Kim referred to earlier to really think about how best to do that. There are opportunities, excuse me, the I, we really looked at from a structural standpoint how DEI is positioned within organizations, and we found that it's well-positioned. So the Office of, the OESL Office, the Office of Equity Strategy and Learning is really well-positioned in terms of Antoinette's reporting structure and positionality of the work. So I also want to provide a friendly reminder, Commissioner Taylor's question really sparked this for me. A reminder that this assessment was intended as an internal look at DEI as it relates to First Five from an organizational culture, policy, and practice standpoint. And so we really focus our analysis on what's happening internally at, within the organization. So just wanted to provide that reminder. So want to go deeper into some of this information, so Antoinette, when you get a chance, next slide. So on that, the piece about the varied understanding about DEI, the survey data suggested some confusion about First Five's definition of equity. Roughly half of staff said yes, the First Five has a, has a clear sort of definition of equity in an, or in or an equity statement, and roughly half staff said no. So there's clearly some internal confusion about that. Interviews and focus group data suggests that organizational value, the organization values DEI, but does not understand exactly how to implement it and wield it in sort of day-to-day work and leverage it from a strategic standpoint. And First Five is not alone in this sort of status of understanding and readiness to really engage with DEI. There's work to be done here, and it's important to uplift. Several interview and focus group participants suggested that DEI-specific staff development, including coaching and training and some other leadership development, really be engaged in to ready staff for the implementation of that action, the DEI action plan that Antoinette referenced earlier. Next slide, please. In terms of values alignment, C took a look at First Five's expressed values within the most recent strategic plan and put those against some of the, what we heard in interviews, focus groups, the survey, and what we learned through document review. And we found some, some misalignment and opportunities to better infuse the values into the work. And so interview and focus group participants described organizational culture. So we asked about culture, described organizational culture as perfectionist and drives over-preparation and overwork and overthink. And it creates a risk averse, rigid, and an environment that's not very nimble. And reflecting on the findings and why staff are really noting this, staff noted that the level of preparation required for board presentations and the fear to make mistakes in such a public setting is part of what drives some of that perfectionism, right? And so not wanting to be tripped up and be asked a question that folks don't know how to answer, be caught in, you know, misspeaking. And this really is counterintuitive to your expressed learning value, and so we see a misalignment there. The findings suggest room for improvement in practices that reflect this learning value. So really interested to engage around this with staff as we continue through our consensus-building process, which we'll talk about in a bit. Interviewing and focus group participants described organizational culture as hierarchical, siloed, and with layers of decision-making that provides some lack of clarity on, on where authority lies among some staff levels. But we see this changing, it was expressed that it was changing, and C has observed this shift. So findings point to the need for greater alignment and integration of work across teams from a collaborative place and in alignment with your collaboration value, as well as greater intention, intentionality around pulling back the curtain and being transparent around processes to involve diverse staff perspectives and perspectives of staff at all level. I'm really thinking about shared leadership as a strategy to really live out the organization's DEI value, specifically collaboration value. Next slide. Continuing on values alignment, as you know, C reviewed quite a few organizational documents, and through that, interviews, focus groups revealed some misalignment between policies and organizational values. And so we saw this starkly in human resource policies and practices. So as it says here, policies related to recruitment and rehiring, retention, succession, etc. And we see that with policies and practices, there needs to be a consistency with priorities and being updated. So the policies and practices are updated to best reflect the current values of the organization. And there's lots of opportunities to do this. And, you know, C has uplifted some suggestions for, for staff consideration. Board adopted policies are opportunities for greater integration of the DEI value and really thinking about that. And the updated procurement policy specifically that you may remember that came before the board in September is, is sort of taking those steps to bring DEI value more into alignment with procurement policy. And as staff continue their work around grappling with data and thinking about recommendations, there might be additional recommendations around this policy and others. Findings suggest that metrics and monitoring methods are needed to ensure policy and practice alignment with organizational values and addressing misalignment. And so this is really a comment on how DEI is not a destination, but a process and a journey that requires continual engagement, continual reflection, continual evaluation of progress. And so updating policies on a one-time basis is important, but really important as well is creating processes that ensure an ongoing reflection of how our values are being lived out through our operational documents. Next slide. So as we share, we took a look at best practices in the field. We looked at four sectors and really looking at from an internal perspective, what are these sectors doing around DEI? And what are the promising practices? And so we looked at philanthropy, the nonprofit sector, government sector, and corporate. And some, you'll see in this chart here, it really notes the type of change that is being considered and engaged in across sectors based on best practice research. So we found that all sectors are making changes as it relates to the internal functions of programs, grant-making, products and services, delivery, and work with communities. And so the internal pieces of those external pieces of work, which makes quite a bit of sense because that is often where organizations start with their internal work is the external, the internalized part of their external work. And so that's consistent with trends across the field. The philanthropic, nonprofit, and government sectors also make changes and are making changes in the areas of vision, mission, and purpose, and really thinking at a high-long-range strategic level where DEI sits and fits within that, and DEI monitoring, evaluation, and accountability. I think we've had so many conversations at First Five since the analysis has come out about accountability, where this work will sit, how we will ensure we're living up to our values. And so it's no surprise that various sectors, like I said, nonprofit, government, and philanthropic are really looking at accountability as well. And finally, all but the government sector are really looking at governance, policies, and evaluations as it relates to DEI, which is critical, I think, to really ensure that values are lining up from governance to staff levels from internally and externally. Next slide. So in addition to looking at sort of secondary research, including sort of published, peer-reviewed research, gray literature, etc., we did a handful of key interviews with DEI experts in the field. And included in that pool of experts, we spoke with John Powell, who's a C team member and who also runs the Center for Othering and Belonging at UC Berkeley and does quite a bit of work around DEI. And so these are some of the high-level findings that, that were shared by these experts on change, on process, and on leadership. So on change, no surprise, change takes time. And this is really about culture change. So culture change is so critical to DEI, especially in terms of how DEI is taken up internally around how staff are treated, around how policies and practices are lived out internally. And so it takes time for culture change. The C team often thinks of culture change requiring three to five years to really start to root itself. The experts we spoke with highlighted five to seven years for culture change, particularly the time it takes for culture to really feel like it's always been that way within organizations. So culture change takes time. On process, for successful DEI assessment and implementation processes. So to ensure that all of this work that we do around analysis and developing a plan actually sticks within an organization, it is critical for the team working on this, doing this work, specifically the DEI consultants, so in this case, C, need to be spending time with leadership to help them understand and digest information and to support all aspects of the project. And so we've started doing this work, and this speaks to how our process is in alignment with best practice. We've been meeting with leadership and working in collaboration with Antoinette and the Office for We've been meeting with leadership and, and working in collaboration with Antonette and, and the Office for Equity Strategy and Learning to really think about best ways to engage leadership across the organization and staff. And on leadership, it's important to understand that successful DEI change requires invested leadership and that leadership must be really clear from a vision and mission perspective about how DEI directly relates to the organization's work and, and can articulate that internally and can articulate that externally. And so, yeah, those are some of the sort of high-level lessons from the field from experts. Next slide. So in terms of work underway, so we've conducted this analysis. We wrapped up due diligence in about June. It took us May or June, it took us about a month to complete analysis. Once we collected all of the data and have been talking about it in a formal and informal way internally within first five. The next step in our process has been to form a DEI governance board made up of staff across the organizations, ensuring that each team, each department within the organization is represented on this board and that a variety of staff levels from leadership to sort of administrative staff and, and all kinds of staff in between. So that there's broad diversity of representation. And so this body is formed and has been meeting and organizing its work. This process is being managed by C. We're, we're facilitating it and supporting staff to engage in this work to really grapple with the data and come up with recommendations. And so we are early in the stages of that work and that work will continue into the first part of next year in terms of staff reviewing and with support from C, reviewing findings, gathering additional data if that's needed, establishing priorities, uplifting recommendations that will ultimately inform the DEI action plan, which will, which you'll see come to light maybe late next year. And with that, I think I'm turning it back over to Antonette.
Yes. So thank you. Thank you, Evan. So commissioners, there are, in terms of next steps, there are two important next steps that I'd like to bring to your attention. The first is the Phase Two C contract, which will be on consent for board approval during the November board meeting. And as you can see here, the focus of Phase Two is the DEI assessment report that would include some early implementation priorities outlined. We would also focus on board and staff learning sessions and the development of a DEI roadmap and action plan. So in this, we're nearing the end of time, but another important next step to call out is we really want to support the board and staff in building common understanding of DEI concepts, terms and language, which are foundational to our work moving forward. Now, we acknowledge that individual commissioners and staff fall into a continuum of DEI competency and that's okay. We're all entering this space with different life and professional experiences, varied understandings and different perspectives. And we all come to this work with a shared commitment to do better. And these are all strengths upon which we can build. So by supporting our collective learning, we're inviting commissioners and staff to explore the ways in which we can more fully live our organizational values and cultivate belonging internally and through our external work. Now, the C team has suggested some learning topics here and Evan can provide more information about these topics if commissioners have questions. But we really want to turn now to board discussion. So in addition to overall reflections on what you've heard, we're eager to hear what learning topics you think will strengthen the board's knowledge and competencies in DEI. We're particularly interested in DEI learning topics that will support the board in fulfilling your governance role as a commission. With that, we appreciate your attentiveness and will now turn it to our chair for board discussion.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the presentation and for all that we will be talking about. So I don't see any commissioners having texted me. Linda, do you have? I know there are people who want to talk, but maybe don't want to be first. I'm not sure. Linda, do you see anyone wishing to speak?
I see Commissioner Taylor's hands up and Commissioner Sapeda after that.
All right, then Ramalis and then Marlene.
Yeah. And one thing I noticed is that you are, the next step is a deal with a report next month. And I asked earlier, did we have an assessment report? Is that report not completed yet or what's going on with it?
Correct. So the intention here today was to share high-level preliminary findings. The report will include some high-level recommendations and implementation priorities. And what we want to do is give staff some time to develop those. So the governance board has just started to meet to really engage with the data. And so the report will include that information. And so we're just taking a beat to allow staff to have the time to do that work so that the report can be complete with that information. But analysis, the work of analysis has been done, but no, there's.
Then let me ask a question. Who is on this government board? And what is the composition of that board? And is it reflective of the equity inclusion that we're looking for in the organization as well as to represent the multiplicity of people that exist in our society? So I want to make sure that I understand that since we're not, I'm not involved in it and somebody else may be involved in it, but I don't know anything about that. That's the other thing. And the second thing is, is, is executive leadership and everyone else on board with what DEI is? And, and is, are they committed and are they reflecting that commitment by their understanding? So that there's a mutual understanding about the staff, the, the executives and our external partners. So we're all talking the same thing. We're all reflecting the same issue. You know what I'm saying? See, I don't know where all this is. I'm hearing it for the first time. I've been asking and I keep getting put off. So the bottom line is that I want to know what's going on. And if I don't see what's going on, they're going to be a problem, but I just don't get it.
You have every right to know what's going on. So absolutely happy to answer all the questions. That's why we're here. Happy to get into this, Antonette. Do you want me to start or?
Yeah. So let me just begin by saying there is no withholding of information from our board. So that's the first thing that we want to make very clear. We are also thinking through what the staff needs to do and learn and what the board has to do and learn because we have, we have different roles. The board has a governance role and the staff has the internal operational role. So we're not trying to withhold any information. We're trying to create the space for staff to actually do the work. So this governance board, it might sound like it is something that includes commissioners and, and external folks, but we've called it an internal governance board that is made up of staff across every team and various levels within our organization, including our executive director, including our executive vice president and other levels across the organization. That team is start, is, is diving more deeply into the operational aspects of what was uplifted by the findings. And there will be opportunities for other staff across the organization to be involved. But want to make sure that we are incorporating all of the, the varied perspectives and interests. And you know, there are lots of, of ideas across staff in our organization. And so this DEI governance board is an opportunity. It's a, a structure to support us really diving into the DEI findings and uplifting recommendations. The reason why the board has not yet received the report is that the report is going to be a culmination of both the assessment and the recommendations. So what we're bringing to you, as Evan said, we're bringing to you some preliminary findings. And again, we've covered some and there are others in the appendix that is, that is included in the board packet. And we're happy to answer any questions, but we're, we're making sure that we're bringing everyone along. There are lots of stakeholders, as you pointed out, Commissioner Taylor. There's the board as a stakeholder, their internal staff at various levels, and that, that's another stakeholder group. And then we do have external partners who are also thinking about DEI and how that shows up in their work and how that actually connects to what First Five L A is doing and funding. And there are lots of conversations that are happening about that. But as in terms of our particular focus, we're trying to figure out how can we do better as an organization? As I said, we come with various experiences, we come with various perspectives, but we also have a shared commitment to do this work. And we're, we are committed to making sure that both staff and the board are coming alongside so that together we can make First Five L A what we aspire it to be.
My other question is, are we making sure that we have appropriate training to develop and uplift the level of understanding of this sophisticated issue as it moves forward? And then we go in there. I want to also say that any organization where it is solid, the policy procedure and practice, policy procedure and practice determines whether the organization does what you think. And so hopefully we're going to come back with a policy procedure and practice that's going to implement this concept internally and externally. And then I need to know in that, who is going to be responsible for doing the monitoring, evaluation and accountability so that we have consistent commitment to this effort? And so that when we go outside of this organization, people understand we really do are committed to it and that we are trying to engage collaboratively with the partners outside to enhance that. And most of those nonprofit organizations are, are moving in that direction anyway. But the key is accountability, monitoring and evaluation. Not accountability for punishment, but for learning. You know what I mean? I, I want to be clear about that so that we're learning and we're continuing to improve, continuing to do it so that, that issue is really concrete within the community, especially the community of color. Because if we don't, when we get outside of ourselves, they're going to know us right away and call us on it. So I'm just trying to be real about this. That's all.
Yeah, and definitely appreciate.
By the way, thank you for the good work. I didn't mean, I want to be clear. I'm not knocking the work. I just want to make sure that we are actually dealing with it on a real and not passing it by and that everybody from top to bottom, left to right is on board with where we're going. And then whatever you need us to do to support you, let us know. Okay?
Yes.
Uh, next, Marlene.
Thank you, supervisor. Thank you, Evan and Antonette for the presentation. I really want to just reiterate what Antonette said about having a shared commitment and that we're all coming at this very extremely sensitive topic from different places and different life experiences. And so we have to acknowledge that and make that explicit. I also want to frame this issue, and this was not brought up in the conversation, Evan. You know, First Five began as a more universal program. And so there's this tendency to not want to talk about differences and not want to talk about ethnic and racial differences because we want to be good for everybody, all children, this kind of neutrality. And that has really kind of goes against the DEI definition of, of equity. We do need to have a shared definition of equity and, and that has to be developed. I mean, among the staff and that everybody has that shared understanding, what does this mean? I also appreciate the fact that this is a very, it's a process that takes the development of trust among all the different players involved. Because we have as a society, we, we are a racist society. And so we have been socialized to think of certain groups as superior to other groups. From, from birth, we're, we're taught that. So it's hard to overcome that. And, and sometimes I feel like my skepticism, my cynicism from my life experiences kind of says, okay, is this sort of like a pendulum swinging in one direction and we'll go back to the neutrality in a few years? I'm hope that, I hope that that's not the case. And, and so I look forward to, to this conversation. It's taking place in, across all arenas. It is, is not just in First Five L A. And so I think that we have to really think about equity the way that John Powell talks about it with universal, targeted universalism. The Blue Ribbon Commission talked about targeted universalism. The Master Plan for Early Childhood Education mentions targeted universalism. So I would really like to see that topic Antonette explored in this conversation going forward. But thank you for that.
Thank you.
Did you, I'm sorry, did I cut you off? You could answer.
Oh, well, I was just saying thank you, but you know, it, it is, you know, I appreciate that because we do have that on the list. C has uplifted targeted universalism as a, a training that both board and staff should participate in. And, and it goes back to Commissioner Taylor's question as well around what are we going to be learning? And so that's what we're very eager to hear more from the board about. We, we, one of the things I've heard so far is in addition to targeted universalism, we need to have some sessions that help us to develop that common language so that we all know what it is that we're talking about and that our work reflects the, the, the way in which First Five L A is defined DEI. So just thank you for that.
Thank you. Linda, any other commissioners raise their hands?
Commissioner Abdo.
Okay, Judy, over to you.
Hi, I just wanted to say that the, the work that you're doing is fabulous. I'm involved in a lot of different organizations that are going through very similar processes, though not as in-depth as you are. And this is really, really quite instructive for me thinking about the other organizations. I just want to raise the issues of gender and I, I don't even know how gay, lesbian, bisexual, whatever, however, we want to define that, that we don't hear those words as often. And certainly many of us have experienced growing up in a, in a very sexist organization. Wherever we, we came from, there were, I, I guess a lot of issues that were not even recognized as what, what differences women experienced and what differences men experienced in the same organizations. And the same thing with gay and lesbian, bisexual, trans, transsexual, all of those things that are, I guess, less talked about when we talk about all of this. But I want to make sure that, that we raise those issues. But again, I want to say, I think you're doing a great job of looking at all of these issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Abdo. And I'll just, I, I think I'll offer to your point what really heartened me when, when speaking with staff in the process of interviewing and focus group. And you'll see this in the appendix for the presentation is that staff really are thinking about diversity from a definition standpoint and a sort of lay understanding of, of diversity in a very broad way. And so I, I, I certainly want to be clear that in addition to race and ethnicity, LGBTQ plus community was brought up. Diversity in terms of geography, diversity in terms of positionality within the organization and, and background, perspective and lived experience are all some of the things that were brought up when thinking about diversity. And so I'm really heartened by staff really are there with, with understand, a broad understanding of diversity and are, are really thinking that way and wielding that understanding, at least in terms of the work we're doing at the governance board level. I've been really happy with how that's playing out. So I completely agree with you and thank you.
Let me ask you a question. Are they understanding the issue of implicit bias as well?
Um, I mean, we didn't specifically assess all staff's understanding of implicit bias as a concept. Clearly implicit bias is on staff's mind and I know, and perhaps Antonette can speak to this more. The staff have been through implicit bias training and spoke about that training in the context of, of interviews and focus groups. And so we heard quite a bit about it. And so it's certainly on staff's mind. But it wasn't, for example, measured, but yes, it's being discussed and considered for sure. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? That raise their hands to speak, Linda?
I don't see any other commissioners expressing an interest to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. So I want to take a couple of minutes to follow up really on all the comments. I feel like so many of us have been engaged in this work under many different titles and eras. And the language is important. The commitment, of course, is even more important. I want to follow up a little bit on what Judy brought up, but really in a, kind of in a broader way, just a set of thoughts to kind of incorporate. One is, we have talked about trauma and the ways in which we deal with trauma and understand certain life experiences as having created trauma. But I don't believe there's been as much attention paid, though I see it beginning, to the trauma of the isms and the ways in which people are treated, the ways in which the system has made certain that they cannot thrive or be treated, I won't even use the word equally, I mean decently. And so in a way, this is one of the things that we're looking to recognize. Along with that are kind of the real life effects on people in our staff, people we serve and the larger community in which we participate. In the 90s or maybe even, I think it was in the 80s, I was working with the courts on these issues. Primarily, my contribution had to do with gender and gender identity issues. But I worked in teams. And the courts were completely clueless that their neutral rules had a different impact on various people. For instance, telling someone that when they come in to get a restraining order, they may not bring their children into the court made it virtually impossible for mothers who were seeking help about domestic violence to get their restraining orders. Because they had to take their children when they went because the court only gave restraining orders, you know, two hours a day. And we forced the court to look at these so-called neutral rules. And Ramalish has brought this up and we've talked about it. Not only the universalism aspect of our work, but any rules, workplace rules. We've seen it played out. Again, I'm looking at the issue of gender primarily in this, but where we don't have childcare or we don't, we let people worry about their own childcare. We let people worry about family leave and who's taking care of people. So even looking at benefits. And that goes to the organizations with whom we work. It's also interesting, I think, as Judy indicated, that though gender is spoken of, it is, and I think in the sense at the moment, almost kind of appropriately, has taken a backseat to the issues of race and ethnicity until Texas. And then suddenly everybody's thinking again about the impact of policies and laws on women. But when I was training people about these issues, I always reminded them that in almost every community, the first question that's asked when a brand-new baby is born is, what'd you have? And the issue embedded in the question is, what is the gender of that baby? Did you have a boy or a girl? And then, of course, the duality of that is, becomes an issue as these boys and girls get older. So the, you know, the attention that we pay, I'll just give you, you know, Judy was trying to cover all of the initials. But I just filed a motion about our jail population. And it's called safely reducing the jail population by expanding the community-based system of care for cisgender women, two-spirit, lesbian, gay, bisexual, questioning and transgender, gender non-conforming and/or intersex individuals. And you would say, oh, my God, that's just a mouthful. And yet it speaks in the gender arena and the same is true as we know in our, all of our racial arenas about the hierarchies that were created based on color, based on hair. I mean, we've all got these traumatic, really life experiences that are so embedded. In the county, with the initiatives that we've begun at the Anti-Racism, Diversity and Inclusion Initiative, as well as the Women and Girls Initiative, we are looking internally at our staff, externally at our clients and in the larger external arena and our impact in the larger community. One of the things that we found over the years is that although discrimination looks different in different kinds of communities, we have found common ground in the ways in which people can be put down. For instance, the denial of marriage that happened to our black brothers and sisters, to our Asian brothers and sisters, to our queer brothers and sisters. It's kind of like if you want to deny someone humanity, you don't allow them to marry or intermarry, as it were in the old days. There's a common ground there. The way our particular traumas of health impacts have been put on a back burner, which of course my community found during the AIDS crisis, but it was nothing new to a community that was trying to get attention, for example, for sickle cell over decades. And, you know, no attention was paid. So I am very excited about our joining this conversation and frankly, joining this commitment and work. And thank you very much, Antoinette and Evan and all the people working with you for working with us on this. I think the aspect of trauma is also one that is ever-present. I think of my Asian brothers and sisters who are frightened these days because of all the disinformation that began with the pandemic and how, you know, they're so at risk everywhere they go. And, you know, it's kind of like thinking about a person shows up to work. What have they already gone through? Or our community meetings, what have they already gone through? The women who made sure that they parked under a light so that when they leave our community meetings, they can maybe be safe. I mean, it is so personal and yet so shared. So I'm sorry to speak so long, but I think all of us have a lot of really personal feelings about this and also a lot of hope. So I thank you again very much for the work. This was an information-only, no vote on this item. Any of my colleagues want to contribute some second thoughts or closing comments or Evan or Antoinette, if you want to as well before we go to public comment?
I'll just say, Commissioner Kuhl, that briefly on trauma, some of what we heard from conversations with DEI experts in the field is that there is, there can be a healing effect on trauma around issues of DEI simply by engaging in the work in a thoughtful, reflective way. And so I completely appreciate and hear you loud and clear on how personal this work is for so many of us. And I continue to encourage that reflection and allowing that personal reflection to inform the work that we all do together. And just really appreciate your time. So thank you.
Yeah, I also, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All done.
I also was, was thinking about the trauma that our families have all brought with them. You know, so many varied immigrant communities. But how, I mean, in my family, for instance, how much I knew of the Holocaust and I was never in it. Do you know what I mean? And, and there was real pain there. And each of the families, all the way back to those who were brought here against their will, has reflected it and you just carry it with you. You don't even know sometimes that you do. And that has been extraordinary. But you know, America is kind of a a very unique experiment. And it's, you know, it can't even decide whether it wants to be a melting pot or a salad because we want to hang on to our true and authentic selves, but we also want to have some shared something. So this is not easy work and I thank you very much for engaging in it and with us. And I think if we have no other comments, we will ask if there are any public comments on item 11.
There are no public comments on item 11.
Okay, thank you all very much. This was, this was really good. I hope if anyone feels at all, I don't know, discomforted or anything that they'll reach out to anybody else. Because I think these are going to be hard for us to, to talk about, even as commissioners. And I, you know, bring up stuff for us. And I, I really appreciate this board very much. And look forward to the day when we're all safe enough that I can give you each a hug because that's what I feel like doing right now. Okay, that takes us to item 12, which is a written-only information item. I don't believe we need to discuss it unless anyone feels the need to ask any questions about it, about amendments to the bylaws, but we are not voting on them today. This simply starts the 21-day notice period for any proposed amendments to the members of this board. So that takes us to public comment on items not on the agenda. Do we have any requests for public comment?
I do have one public comment for items not on the agenda.
Okay, let us take that public comment.
This comment is from Jen Young. She says, hello, I'm interested in what First Five five things of the slow rollout of the new universal transitional kindergarten. My child is turning four in July and doesn't make the cut to be able to join her siblings at our local school in 2022 through 2023. Thank you. And that concludes our general public comments for today's meeting.
Right, I'm not certain how to handle a question that comes in public comment, but I'll leave it to the staff to decide if there is any answer to be made or wish to be made. So anybody else have any closing comments or thoughts? Because we've come to the end of our agenda. Amazingly enough, we generally allocate from 1:30 to 3:30 for this meeting and it's now 3:27. So it feels like we've been together for quite a while. Anybody else? Seeing no one else, I will declare that this meeting is adjourned with my thanks. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sheila. Bye, everybody.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye, everyone.